In the next hour or so, a work session on technology as it's used in the district and what we want the future for technology to look like in our district. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Lori for an introductory kickoff.
All right. Thank you, President Meisterlein, Dr. Benson, and the Board of Directors for the time tonight to talk about technology and where we've been and where we're headed. We've really built a solid foundation over the last several years, but we also understand that the rapid pace of technology changes in the world around us prove both exciting and challenging. I'd like to take a brief minute to review our progress. First, in 2006, 2007, we identified key areas that needed to be addressed in order to build a solid foundation for the district. Our network infrastructure and data systems have seen significant growth over the last five years. We've added wireless access in all of our buildings. We've installed a fiber network between all of our facilities to ensure our network bandwidth capacity needs are met for quite some time. Our Internet bandwidth has increased 500 percent in the last six years, and we expect that to continue, that growth pattern. We have also more than quadrupled our data storage and backup capacity. As you can see from this list, we've also updated most of our core data systems to take advantage of more sophisticated designs, address efficiencies, and extend accessibility to a variety of users. In the classrooms, we've updated computers. We've added mobile labs and interactive whiteboards, so instruction can leverage the wealth of digital learning resources available. We've also piloted a variety of classroom tools. Staff development is a significant part of our efforts and is reflected in the numbers here. We've had 13 -- over 1,300 staff members participate in more than 215 professional development courses that related directly to the user integration of technology resources. In addition to the professional development numbers shown here, we've provided over 900 hours of in-building level support as new equipment or applications have been implemented We could not have made any of this progress without the influx of Silo funding. It's been critical to making major strides in the district and will remain a critical funding source for us. At this time, I'd like to recognize the work that our Silo Oversight Committee does for us, and I've asked Tim Guston, our Oversight Chair, to provide some insight and perspectives from the committee.
Thank you to the Board for allowing me a few brief moments here to comment on technology, where we are. I am one of six individuals who make up the Technology Oversight Committee. Our committee is comprised of individuals who either direct or manage IT infrastructures for companies such as Rockwell Collins, CRST, United Fire, Ready Wireless, and a number of other companies. Our combined collective group has over 155 years of IT experience. Yes, we were around when there was just mainframes and green bar reports, and you waited two days after you made your request to finally get them, to today where we see them real time. Our Oversight Committee, we monitor and ensure all the technology projects undertaken and paid for through Silo have been included in the publicized plan, our projects that are completed on time and on budget, and that you and the community have access to reports to the implementation of these technology projects. Our Technology Oversight Group is an active participant in aiding the district technology services endeavors. In particular, we leverage our experience to aid in refining, enhancing, and seeking additional information in the following areas. We review the processes used in the decision-making process of which technologies. We help review the RFPs. We review all the technology proposals. We look for others who have or may have established best practices in other areas, including the business world. We set up access to our companies and the people with expertise in areas under consideration by the DTS group and their projects to understand how these technologies have been incorporated into the business world, not only successfully, but also what the pitfalls might be. And we guide DTS to ensure technologies that are not only put into place, but they're measured, so we know that we have an ROI on the dollars that we spend in the community for these technologies. I can share with you, all the members of the Oversight Committee, that we are impressed with all of the DTS staff. They represent a high-level passion, knowledge, and excellence, and with a constant ability to look for the best ways to implement technology. As you can see from this chart that's up here right now, that there's $14.2 million that have been spent since the Silo fund was first started its allocations in 2007. To put that 14.2 into perspective, I think it also will allow you to understand all of the work that the DTS group does. There's been a total of 918 interactive whiteboards placed within the school district. 7,300 computers were replaced. 1,380 laptops added for mobile labs, 168 printers, almost 1,000 wireless access points within the district now, and over 200 network switches, and a new phone system with approximately 2,100 phones capabilities. It's quite an undertaking. It is the Silo's perspective and belief that while this has the district's technology platform on firm ground, we are all aware that technology is not static. Therefore, there will be ongoing need for reinvestment in all areas of technology moving forward. While we don't see the need to be bleeding edge, there will be the need to be technologically competent with the changing times. And with that, I'd like to share with you just a couple perspectives from the business world, and as we look at technology and its rampant, continuing rampant rate of growth, what it means, because it does impact the way business and schools will have to function moving forward. Obviously, in the industry, people and working environments are changing, and they're changing rapidly. So the ways information is managed and used to achieve results will need to change as well. Today, information technology is increasingly complex, evolving, and becoming more heavily targeted for everything, from anything from security threats that could cause damages to schools, or businesses, or faculties, or student operations. So it's something that we have a constant need to be aware of. As social media and mobile devices become more consumerized, the needs of the school district will change. I don't know about you, but how many of you have a mobile phone that you've had for over three years? Not many. And quite frankly, mobile phones now, and especially smartphones, are outselling traditional desktop units. So desktop units are fading, and fading rapidly. A higher reliability expectation will be placed on wireless services in the future to support this explosion of owner-use or user-owned devices resulting in faster refresh rates for technology, just to keep up with the changing demand. Today's cell phones, tablets, and laptop usage far exceed the number of desktop units sold. Technology is becoming smaller, faster, and more mobile. Continuous learning will be in and outside of the classroom, as it is in the business world today. That puts impact on both students and faculty, and they'll be continuing to increase as applications become more personalized and the use of the Internet as a source of information expands. The IT industry is moving maintenance windows to shorter intervals, putting greater reliance on replacing aging software packages faster. This is a direct reflection on the need to maintain a secure operation. Alternatives to owning software and hardware is becoming the new norm as companies move to software and services in the cloud and/or subscription-based models. This allows refreshes to be managed by third parties and can allow for a surge of capacity as needed. The bottom line is, as we look at it from the business world, and it would be for the school district as well, technology is not going to slow down. Moore's Law is still in effect, and we look at technology changing over 18 months to 24 months now, and it still continues to do so. So I encourage you that although I think we are on firm footing here within the school district, that we're not finished. Thank you for your time.
Have you been on the Silo Committee?
Since its inception. There are three of us since 19 -- or from 2007.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that commitment. We value the expertise that you bring to that committee as well. So thank you so much for your report and your participation.
Well, as Tim alluded to, and as what we're seeing also, is that we need to keep moving forward with a purpose. The technology landscape is changing. The cycles for technology, new technology or refreshing type technology is ever shrinking. And what we've found too is our students are totally connected and engaged outside of school, and we need to leverage that connectedness as we move forward. Our 21st century learning environments are connected. They're accessible anywhere, anytime, and they're collaborative, and that's where we need to move as a district. In order to assess where we're currently at with our district's progress towards conversion to 21st century, digital-rich learning environments, we collected feedback from our staff, from our buildings, and also from site visits of places that are moving to more technology-infused environments and site visits of best practices. Our investment in the infrastructure and classroom resources, as Tim said, is solid groundwork for the next steps we need to pursue as we continue moving forward. As we move forward, it's essential to remember that there's interconnected components. Each has a significant foundational role, and as changes are made in one area, there's effect on other areas. Our network infrastructure and data systems are critical. The network must be robust, reliable, and scalable, and network utilization, as I said earlier, has grown significantly over the last 10 years, and it will continue to do so. Our data systems are essential to daily operations. Everything from communications, student information system, food service, transportation, security, finance, and HR, all these keep the district running smoothly. Instructional support and technical support are also significant components. Besides the need to keep everything running, secure, and up-to-date, the amount of training provided when new equipment or applications arrive correlates directly to the integration of these resources in our work environment. Classroom resources, including computers, interactive whiteboards, document cameras, student response systems, anything that helps enable the teacher create a dynamic and digital-rich learning environment, needs to be maintained and reviewed, and those next trends need to be looked at. And finally, ensuring student access to the computers and digital learning resources continues to be a challenge for us. Even though we've increased the computing access in all of our buildings, the progression to more digital learning environments results in need for more. As we maintain -- as we move forward, we'll continue to focus on student learning. We'll refresh computers in a timely manner. We'll ensure our network and data systems are robust and reliable to meet our needs, and we'll meet the instructional and operational support needs of our staff and students. As we strive to expand the 21st century learning environment, we need to address student access. We need to move forward with a high-quality learning management system that allows student access to classroom resources both inside and outside of school, and also allow that learning management system become a platform for collaborative learning and the ability for student engagement and teacher interaction beyond the classroom. For staff, we need to implement a digital resource library that aligns high-quality instructional resources with student learning expectations. As a classroom teacher, it can be overwhelming to have to sort through all of the resources that are available, and as we move forward in the district with any new curriculum adoptions, we need to help build those repositories, those libraries of high-quality resources that the teachers and students can access. And we also need to provide job-embedded learning opportunities and time to incorporate these resources to the fullest benefit for student learning. Just a few final thoughts. As we look to address student access in online learning environments, there are different paths to consider. You may have heard of terms such as one-to-one, bring-your-own technologies, flipped classrooms, online classes. All of these need to be defined relative to intended outcomes and considered based on their overall impact in all of these areas. For example, if we consider a desired outcome of increasing student access and moving to digital textbooks, in the bring-your-own-device technology realm, student-provided hardware may or may not have the ability to accommodate holding digital textbooks, or they may or may not have the ability to access certain types of text or digital resources. So we just have to look at what our intended outcomes are, and then ensure that whatever path we take, we've made sure that those outcomes are reachable through that path. In a one-to-one type environment, the choice of device, if the district provided a one-to-one rather than a bring-your-own, the district can tailor the type of device to meet those intended outcomes. If you want digital text, we can look at what does it take for digital text, what kind of resources does it need behind it. The other things, difference between a bring-your-own device and a online or a one-to-one type initiative is the expectations teacher have for what they can expect students to do in their classroom. In our high schools, when they have math, we recommend a type of calculator, and if the students are using that type of calculator, the teacher can help troubleshoot, they can help determine what formulas to plug in, how that particular device works. If a student comes in with a different brand of that calculator, the teacher may not know how to operate that, may not be able to help the student move forward with that device. And that's true with bring-your-own-device-type technologies too. Each impact has its pros and cons. It has different impacts and different parameters then for network architect, technical support needs, staff's ability to develop and share instructional resources, as well as general management of resources, including what happens when the equipment breaks and is lost or stolen. Another thing with one-to-one, which is a real common tactic to use, is we have to, if we want to have that discussion, we need to talk about what does one-to-one mean? Because in some cases, it means there'll be enough devices within a classroom for every student to use. Some one-to-ones are every student in the district gets a device that they travel back and forth to school with. Some one-to-ones are a specific grade level that has it. So all of those things need to be vetted as to what the intended outcome is. At this time, I'll turn over the microphone to Becky Martin, and she's going to lead a facilitated discussion.
And I wondered if anyone had any questions at the board table that they'd like to ask about this report? We'll move over to Becky.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to reference Lori's last slide here on the screen as we move forward with our discussion. And also, in your PowerPoint, your last page is a one-pager with black and red printing. So I'm going to reference the screen and the last page with black and red printing. Lori talked a lot about how these areas overlap, and yet we're going to talk about some combination of these areas. The first, let's just look at the one-pager first. The black ink represents items that can be addressed over the next four years with current funding. The red, I'm reading off the page, the red items address best practice staff survey, assessment of building needs, and funding for those items, and red has not been established. That's the difference between the red and the black color coding. Also, you'll notice that the one-pager is divided into three groups as opposed to four. So the three groups are classroom resources and student access. The second one is staff development and support, and the third is network infrastructure and data system resources. Now, in Lori's presentation, she split the student access and the classroom resources into two because they had some distinct qualities that were different. In her survey and in her work with the schools, visits, and other areas, they're combined on your one-pager. So student access and classroom resources are combined in that top group. That's the group where we will start. Do you have questions about the organization of what you're seeing? Okay, we'll follow the same process that we did last time we were together, and that is, we'll give you some time to talk with an elbow partner, about four or five minutes. And we would like for you to think about your considerations and your feedback related to the information that Lori's provided and the information on this sheet as far as the recommendations of how to move forward with a technology plan. Now, maybe recommendations isn't the right word, Lori, help me out here. These are things that were suggested by various groups, and that's how they appeared on this page. So what we want are, again, considerations and feedback. We'll take the first section, which is titled Classroom Resources and Student Access, which is the blue and green bubbles, remembering that it's all interactive, you can't really pull them apart, they're all interconnected. Four minutes, then we'll do a round robin for you to respond with considerations, feedback questions, one group at a time, and then we'll take the second section. Questions? I think we'll have a group of three and then two groups of two here tonight. Let's go with five minutes. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I mean, if you're just slow.
All right, lessons to learn from school districts who've done this work. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Think I'm on your wavelength. All right.
We talked about actually modifying the first one. So instead of just maintaining existing classroom resources, we're not sure that we're at a point where we want to maintain what we have. I mean, do we need whiteboards in all of our classrooms, looking down the line here? Do we want desktop computers? For instance, you know, those are some questions that we have, whether or not they'll be relevant in the next few years.
All right, so you are, you have questions regarding maintaining the existing resources?
Right, we're suggesting maybe that we look at a modification of that.
Questions and modification of maintaining current resources. Thank you.
Okay, we liked the learning management system that Holly shared with us tonight, and we would like to see that expanded.
Okay, expanded from the pilot groups?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Learning management system expanded from pilot. Thank you. Okay. Another one?
I like that what we saw tonight was a graphic. Blather into the air. What Mary just said, I think, you know, the classroom management system or the learning management system is a breath of fresh air for our district. Either we embrace it, or we're just going to go by way of the dodo bird.
Okay. The new initiative of Canvas is a breath of fresh air.
Okay, I think the next one I'll jump on is the actual providing the mobile computing devices, the one-to-one. We've had the chance at our national conference and at some other professional development to look at one-to-one. We've seen other local districts and districts in Iowa and across the country doing one-to-one. So we're definitely not the bleeding edge, I think, as Tim Guston said. But, you know, we're technologically competent at this point. There are options out there that we've seen at our conference, including Chromebooks by Google that do not require any tech support. There's no hard drives and things on these things. You open them, they open to the internet, so it's cloud-based learning, which it sounds like Canvas is. I'd just like us to pursue that. These are inexpensive devices relative to other hardware. They're a little over $200 apiece, from what we've been told, by the Leiden School District in the Chicagoland area, who's been using them now for a couple of years. Google, as a corporation, has supported them in that, in their Google apps, which are free as well in the cloud. So I think that there are some options there. And Ann and I talked about, we would like to see the district start looking at the top at grade 12 and working backwards. So our high school kids, this is the most important for them to get started right now on these technologies and have this in their hands. Funding for these sort of one-to-one things, I don't know how that can work. But if we're already asking our kids that are taking math to buy graphing calculators that cost $150 or whatever it is apiece, is there a model? We see Xavier High School, they're supplying a portion of it. They have some outside funding, and they're asking parents to kick in part of it. There's different models of asking kids to do this so that maybe the district doesn't have to pay for the whole amount. The kid can keep it through their whole high school career and take it with them off to college or something. So I guess that that's where we're at. Anything else?
I think I heard two things in there. Explore a variety of mobile devices and working with our network, our situation. And secondly, would be starting with 12th grade with some of the mobile devices, one-on-one, and working backwards.
Sure.
Let's bracket Chromebooks. Just, I want to capture that as an investigative strand that we can look at.
Okay. I think Lori and Laurel and Holly all have that, too. Okay, and then the 12th grade. All right, thank you.
I think we support everything that John just said. And in addition, I would like to somehow develop some kind of relationship with either the city or a provider and make sure that our community is Wi-Fi free. We can't send our kids home if they don't have access to the internet, and not all of our students have that access. So somehow, we need to collectively come together and provide that for them.
Partnerships for free Wi-Fi?
Yep.
Thank you.
Can we expand when someone has like the same idea?
Sure.
So we talked about that, too, and just that some districts keep their buildings open longer. John said one district puts little head logos go up about hotspots and that kids, even if it's not all the way across the city yet, maybe it's some bookstores or coffee shops or something, like get on board sooner, so.
And I like that idea of expanding hours in our buildings because why can't we be open Saturday and Sunday and allow kids to drop in?
And our new public library, too, is brought up.
All right, thank you. We're recording that as extended school hours for access?
I.
Gary?
I like the idea of, we didn't bring it up specifically with the Chromebooks, but I like the concept because we did talk about how to, it becomes so expensive to continue to upgrade to stay with the newest technology. One of the advantages of the Chromebook is that it's just a shell, and the software and so on is updated in the cloud. So it helps get away from that, and then it brings down your initial unit to cost. But I, in a conversation earlier today, talking with someone from another district, another state, it was a principal of a high school. They, I asked if they had tried one-to-one or bringing in their own technology. And they said they tried that for, it was either last year before, and it crashed your bandwidth. They have computer labs and so on. And when they started bringing in the other, the other technology, it zapped their bandwidth to their computer labs and so on, were just crawling. They were not adequate, so they had to discontinue that policy. So my question, we started talking about that and expanding it to the public and then opening it up. What is our capacity of our bandwidth right now? If it isn't, what would it be? And then it becomes an issue of what additional investment do we need to do in order to have the capacity to do that? Not that it's, that we don't do it, just that it's, we know upfront, we know what we're going.
Right, that's the relationship to the red bubble, the network, infrastructure.
So bring your own devices and issues that are related to that. I've kind of heard a couple times.
So is a one-to-one.
And the one-to-one, bring your own device and one-to-one. And what bandwidth issues do we have? And then is the second part of that, Gary, what is our current status on our bandwidth?
Well, it's all together.
Or it's our.
Maybe it isn't an issue, maybe our current bandwidth, our capacity is already there. I don't know. It's a technique.
Okay. And then current capacity. All right. Thanks.
I went to a presentation by, I'm not calling him Einstein of computers. He went so rapidly and presented so much information, you're going like, whoa. But one overriding theme he had is, is that we are in a major turning point. And you're seeing in PC sales right now that they're dropping. And he said, the right device is not out there right now. That, that, you know, the right device is going to be the combination of the phone, it's not an iPad or anything, none of them are out there. But he said it's going to come out within the next six months, and it's going to radically change what's going on. So I think that's something we really need to watch is that, you know, computers seems like we'd go through these steps of innovation. And I watched a lot of them, and he's just made comment. We are at one of these major steps right now because, yeah, that we're in another spoke on that wheel of, you know, the cloud is starting up, but it's bigger than that.
Yeah, they had, what are you talking about? They had a Google-icious presentation at the last day in San Diego.
Same guy.
And in that, they talked about the glasses. Those will be out by Christmas, and you have your Google Glasses, and you'll be able to ask questions and see things in front of you and ask for information that, you've probably seen the commercial before. But bottom line is that that is supposed to be the next big step in computing knowledge. And it ties into your phone.
We are writing down two things. The population of current devices available and the rapid evolution of devices.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, I just want to interrupt for just a minute because we could talk about this all night long. So let, if you don't mind, let's just kind of keep to the instruction that Becky gave us in making these comments that we can put on that. That's all right.
That's all right.
Because all of us went to all of those classes, and all of us have a lot to say about all of this.
Got it. So I don't know what Ann thinks about this, but, because we didn't talk about it exactly. But I know that my kids in high school are carrying around 40-plus-pound backpacks, and I talked to a number of their high school teachers. And they would like to see paperback or paper textbooks go to the wayside, and these things get onto e-textbooks. At least, you know, when we're talking AP things, we're buying, I think, two sets of textbooks. And, you know, all these high school kids now are coming with some sort of mobile device. And if there's a way for us to get away from paper textbooks where appropriate, I'm not saying it's appropriate in every case, but let's get moving that way. I don't want to spend a whole bunch more money on a seven-year set of textbooks when right now other districts are using e-textbooks and are very successful with it, so.
Okay, ebook, electronic textbooks where appropriate. I'm going to move you over there. All right.
Pass.
Pass. Was that a pass? Are you thinking? I think that's a pass. Comes back to.
Oh, my goodness.
So we had talked earlier, when we had our discussion about the last one, mobile computing devices for staff. That's kind of related to the very first one we said about modify existing classroom resources. So historically, we've had desktop computers for staff, and maybe those go by the wayside, and that's where we start putting in the mobile devices for staff.
Okay, looking at other devices for staff as opposed to a traditional desktop?
Yeah. Because even though that's, I mean, that kind of helps with the funding if we're going to do different devices.
Okay.
Not an additional device, just a different device.
A different one. So make sure it's not additional, Holly, but not additional but.
I think we've passed.
Are you all done? Oh, okay. Well, I have, I went to a lot of these sessions, so I have some ideas, so. I'm trying to see where I was next. Oh, yeah. So in terms of, our teachers are already doing some amazing things, even outside of the pilot project that you have with Canvas. My own kids and friends of ours' kids have teachers that are doing really cool stuff in the classroom. They're using the cloud, some of them are using Moodle, some of them are using Google. They're doing all kinds of things. Some of our classes are actually doing what's basically a flipped classroom. Some of them are doing project-based learning. And I think in terms of professional development, there's a lot of resource out there already. So if there were a way to harness all of that expertise that these leading-edge sort of technology teachers are doing, pull that together and start having them showing other teachers what's possible and what the resources are. We talked about developing a library, and I think some of these examples are there even beyond what the district has seen already in pilots.
All right, thank you for the segue into the second piece, which is staff development and support. Well done.
There you go.
All right. We'll capture that while you have a few minutes to talk about the second section, which is staff development and support, both technical and instructional. And remember to try to tailor your comments to this, these suggestions, funded and non-funded. They get five minutes. Could, could please draw your conversations to a close? This time, we'll start down here. Staff development and support, both technical and instructional.
So our first conversation had to do with that word, technical. And we were a little unclear, and maybe it means both. But is the technical for the teacher in the classroom and their technical ability? Or is it for the district's technology department and their technical ability to support the teachers in the classroom? And maybe just reading through this, it kind of was saying both. But it might, I'm not, so that was kind of just, I guess, some clarification that we were looking for is, when we're talking technical, who's, what technical are we talking about?
Lori, you want to speak to that briefly?
In a microphone.
And giving them the same resources didn't actually make sense. But I think that might need to have a better definition of the problem in order to come up with a solution.
Clarification of...
Solution.
Clarification of the, what's it called?
Tech integration specialist.
Tech integration specialist.
Per building, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Mary?
I can make this very brief. We supported everything in black and everything in red.
Okay.
And the only comment, and then I'll pass for the rest of the conversation, but the only other comment I'll make is, I had the same question regarding the tech integration specialist and how we can incorporate students into that tech team because there are some really bright technologically talented students.
And maybe the role of students in this role.
I think there's a lot of models for that, but I'm interested to see what ed reform looks like in terms of the teacher leadership model and because we have so much of that now, whether or not the tech piece of this could play out. So stay tuned on that.
And other models. And just put another bullet. All right, thank you.
Yes?
Yes.
We were staying right to the, I think we agree with all of the black and all of the red.
All of the black and all of the red.
Do one, I think we had the discussion that we talked about, and I think there's more to be read into the technology specialist. Some of the comments in, looking through the report that was sent and the comments from the individual buildings, they don't have the time. We can't just put technology in and say, "Go forth and do good work." There's enough on the teacher's plate right now. They need help in how do we, you've given me the whiteboard, you've given me these things. How do I integrate? How do I use this? Now we talk one-on-one and we talk other things. It's not just putting it there, but how do I, how do I use this technology now that you have? And so I think it's more, the tech support is more than just making sure the machine turns on.
Right.
It's what you can do with it and helping them to integrate and use that.
And also for...
Right. Right, thereafter to...
Integration of best, cluster of best practice.
Right, not just using, they're just tools and it's how you use the tool and we're talking about changing.
And best practice for using technology tools?
Method instruction.
Trying to change instructional practice.
Right.
That's what some of this flipped classrooms and project-based learning is. It's using the tools to get away from this sage on the stage to a more participatory instructional practice. We need to capture that idea somehow. I'm trying to paraphrase what you're saying.
That's good.
Aligning, aligning the technology with the best practice and best practice with technology. It goes both ways. I would say integration, I believe I'm hearing integration of technology with best practice and best practice with technology so that they don't stand alone, they work together.
So the, the next thing that we had was, we don't need to be the ones creating the wheel. We don't need to recreate the wheel. It's already out there. We're not, again, bleeding edge here, so take best practice, copy what other people are doing, bring in those people and have them show us what's worked and what hasn't worked and we don't need to make the same mistakes that others have made, so. And under that, same thing with technology and the support that's needed, it really depends on what devices and what types of software and things we need. So if you go with laptops or iPads, there may, and you have your own software that you're storing on-site, there may be a lot more technological support needs versus going with something like the Chromebook and cloud-based learning that somebody else is responsible for and we pay a per-student fee or some other model of fee structure.
So I think, again, I'm hearing a couple of things. I wanted to investigate what are the best resources that are currently available, what are other school districts doing, what does that look like? Look for another model.
Yeah, just copy best practices.
Right, right. Best practices.
Yep. Okay.
I just add that through this whole process, don't forget that in some cases, a pen and or pencil and paper is still really good technology and there's applications there that...
Okay. Let's remember paper and pencil.
Not very much anymore, though.
No, I, I'll go over, there's a teacher that's doing a thesis on this at Pearson did a presentation that I was at and it was really good. The pencil and paper for certain things is working better.
Working better. Okay, does that finish up this group? Thank you. Then we'll do...
Just that, as far as the training, again, that we're not starting from scratch. I mean, this was investigate best practice for devices, but also in developing curriculum or training or whatever, we don't want to, we want to make sure we're not having four people be developing curriculum for the same thing, whether that's technical or instructional. So that's...
I think that was, I think that was captured here, maybe not specifically enough.
Well, the best practice, I thought that was more discussion on device and device support. This is more on content.
Yeah, I was talking about content too. But our discussion went a little bit further than that too and we talked about, you know, we don't want eight different Algebra One classes, teachers using different, I mean, what's the best practice and then get that foundation there. And if they want to use some other sort of 21st century learning, you know, as an add-on to that foundational structure, that might make some sense to us. But, I mean, that's just one example.
I would just say investigate resources that are currently available, again. We'll know what that means. All right, anything else for that topic? Then let's move on to the third one, network infrastructure and data system resources. Again, five minutes to talk. All right, thank you. Infrastructure and data systems resources. We'll go with the middle group first.
Again, we'll make this pretty brief. We agreed with everything in black and everything in red.
All right, everything in black and everything in red. Yes.
You can't do that.
You did.
We agree with that too, except, except implement student email and so on. We think we're going to need a lot more policies that are going to have to be there and look at security in every way, shape, and form. You know, cameras, videos, and then the use of emails, whatever it is that's out there.
Okay, so school security, I'm hearing. Using technology, using, I'm hearing a couple of things. I'm hearing use technology for school security.
Right.
All right, that would be one.
And then, security within the technology.
Okay, and then, security within the technology.
And policies.
And policies.
And policies.
Yep. And actually, I think I'm going to put that as a third one. Using technology for school security, security within technology itself, and then looking at policies for using...
Policies for use of email, what you can say in the email, what you can do on that computer if you're in the classroom.
Right.
And, and story, what you can, what you can't and things like that.
Okay. All right, good, thank you.
Ours isn't so short.
What?
We have ideas.
All right, let's give us one.
Okay, so, so the first item in red talks about replacement timelines for network infrastructure, but then there's an item in black that says, "Implement cloud environment for data storage and collaboration." So I wasn't really sure if we're trying to make our own cloud or, or we're going to be putting stuff someplace else, but I didn't quite know how those, I guess any clarification on how bullet number two and bullet number five are supposed to go together.
All right.
Because they don't make sense to me. You got a microphone?
No.
No.
There it does. Jessica?
Is it working now?
He's going to turn it off, just keep talking.
Okay. All right. Bullet number two talks about the network infrastructure, which is really the switches and the things that run the network and the data storage, the servers that are behind the network. The 24/7 file storage and productivity application access for students and staff, I think that's the other one you were referencing?
Well, just the cloud environment, so that's...
Okay, yeah. The cloud environment is to allow staff and students to have 24/7 access to their files. It may, if we put them in the cloud, in the internet, it may reduce some of the server hardware.
Demands.
Right, but it will increase the demands on the network.
Okay.
Because you need that extra bandwidth and extra capacity to reach those cloud resources.
Okay.
Yeah, a question about that, just quick, I know we have other things on the schedule here, but, so if a student's at home or they're off at the local coffee shop using that in the cloud in the evenings or weekends, that doesn't affect our network bandwidth, does it? If it's off in some other server?
No.
It's just when they're actually in our buildings?
Right.
That's, okay, all right.
And then, the last bullet, security on it, do we have a person dedicated to IT security?
No, we do not.
Okay, is that, do we have, is that part of somebody's job?
It is part of multiple people's jobs.
Okay.
But it is a realm that we should consider dedicating staff to.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right.
Okay, what I think we'll do is several of these across categories, so what we're going to do is to take these concepts and ideas and categorize them, get you back a kind of a rough draft of how we place things around, and then we'll get some comments and get those back to you. The other thing is, this is a very helpful discussion for our technology team that will be going to the technology site, NSBA site visit. You talked about seeing best practice, several of the board members did. We're going to go out, we've got a team going out to do that in a couple of weeks, so they're going to have the advantage of this discussion for how to focus some of their energies and how they discuss some things. So we really appreciate the discussion and this should be very helpful as we look at it and see about how to get some comments back to you on how we can utilize these ideas.
What's the timeline on this, by the way?
Well, we need to bring a technology plan forward so that it's approved. We'd like to have it approved and ready for the next school year and really kick off some energetic ideas around this. This is not a static target. School district institutions are much better at static, you know, where you've got an objective and you can reach the objective and you can say, "We've reached this objective." This is, this is very much a non-static target, is a moving target. And somebody, I think Keith just said, you know, "In the next six months, there may be this new thing." Well, we, we have to, we have to get going, but we have to be nimble at the same time.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to recognizing district retirees through a video with Jill.
Cedar Rapids Community School...
Cedar Rapids Community School District is proud to recognize the career contributions of our retiring employees. The efforts of these teachers, support staff members, and administrators have enriched the lives of thousands of students and have strengthened the district and community. I am pleased to congratulate them on their accomplished careers and to thank them for their dedicated years of service.
Carol Ford has served for the past several years as the district's front desk receptionist, moving from the ESC to the welcome trailer at the ESC Kingston campus to the Educational Leadership and Support Center. At each location, Carol has been the one to welcome district visitors in person and address questions and concerns by phone. During her 22-year career with the district, she also worked at McKinley Middle School, Wilson School, and Kennedy High School. Before joining the district, she worked in banking and retail sales. For Carol, the opportunities to help inform and calm a parent, community member, or student will be among our most memorable career moments. As she now prepares to begin what she calls "the second phase of her life," Carol intends to continue enjoying life to the fullest. Words to live by for us all. Thank you, Carol, for your many years of support and service to the Cedar Rapids Community School District. Congratulations on your retirement.
It's my pleasure to introduce my friend and colleague, Bonnie Spate. And as she considers her retirement, Bonnie can't help but fondly recall all of the people she's worked with in the district during her 22 years here. First and foremost, the students, the ones that it's all about. And the facilitators, who work tirelessly to design professional development and assessments that promote student learning. And the amazing teachers, who come in during the summer to serve on committees and work after hours to be part of textbook adoption groups. And all of the support professionals she's encountered, each of whom truly cares about doing what's best for students. She says she'll miss us all. Currently a district math facilitator, Bonnie previously taught 6th grade at Roosevelt Middle School and also in the parochial system. In her retirement, she intends to play a lot more golf, when she's not biking, volunteering, traveling, enjoying her family, or just hanging out with her friends. And I know she'll also be seeking out ways to continue helping students to strengthen their math skills, maybe even some adults. Thank you, Bonnie, for all that you've shared. Congratulations on your retirement.
During her 21 years as an 8th grade teacher at McKinley Middle School, Nancy Doherty has truly enjoyed the excitement of her ever-changing profession. She proudly recalls McKinley's designation as a "School of the Arts" and looks back fondly on the summers she spent teaching math at Jefferson and Washington and her role supervising the district's "Learn to Swim" program at Washington. The successes of her students are her proudest accomplishments, however. In her classrooms, McKinley students have always been challenged. Their participation in the Math Counts program has become a tradition, and she is proud to note that student groups have earned recognition each year for their efforts in that program. As she prepares to retire, Nancy also salutes the colleagues who have been instrumental in making McKinley a place she calls home. She knows that they will remain a special part of her life. Since she has been both a teacher and a parent in the district, Nancy makes it clear that she will forever be a fan of the CRCSD. During her 35-year education career, Nancy also taught in Ohio and Florida. In retirement, she looks forward to returning to Florida more frequently as she gives up Iowa winters. She'll also have fun spending more time with her grandchildren. Thank you, Nancy, for your decades of service to students. During her 36-year career, Cheryl has taught levels 1, 2, and 3 special education at Kennedy High School, Taft Middle School, and, for nearly 30 years, at Washington High School. Incidentally, Cheryl is a Wash alum herself. As she prepares to retire, Cheryl reflects on many special memories and is proud to have been part of such an ever-changing and rewarding career. As the quote goes, "If you love what you do, you'll never work a day in your life." Cheryl has loved being an educator and plans to remain involved with students in a variety of ways. We look forward to her continuing to support students and wish her all the best in retirement.
Okay, next, I'll keep this with Jill to talk about a district employee.
Thank you. I would like to ask the board to close this meeting tonight in a moment of silence, as I'm sorry to report that we did lose an employee, Teresa Osborne, who passed away on March 13th of this year. She was a member of the Food and Nutrition Department since April of 2006, starting her career as a food service assistant, backup cook at Harding Middle School. After a few years, she transferred to Arthur Elementary, where she served as a food service assistant, cashier, and assistant manager. In December of 2011, she returned to the middle school setting where she took a position at Roosevelt. Teresa was an important member of the Food and Nutrition Team, well-thought-of by her teammates and thousands of students she served over the years. She was gentle, kind, and very nice to students. Her passing is a great loss to the department, and she will be truly missed.
Have a moment of silence. Okay, with that, we will close our meeting. Please take your school board calendar home with you and fill out your meeting evaluation. Thank you all for your participation this evening.